Welcome to the Town of Cordera Madera Planning Commission Meeting for Tuesday, February 9, 2021. Adam, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Good evening. Commissioner Metcalf.
Here.
Commissioner Bundy.
Here.
Commissioner Chase.
Here.
Commissioner Bendel.
Here.
And Commissioner Rizzo.
Here.
That's great. All right. We have a full panel tonight. At this point in the meeting, we always open the meeting to public comment for that which is not on tonight's agenda. If you have something you wish to say that is not a part of the agenda, you have three minutes to do so. Tracy, do you show any hands up for this?
I do.
Okay.
I don't have a name unfortunately, just a phone number. I'm gonna ask you to unmute. Go ahead and speak.
Hi there. You'll have to unmute yourself in order to make a public comment for something that is not on tonight's agenda.
Alternatively, if we're having audio problems, you can email publiccomment@tcmail.org. Want to try? It's like they're connected by a phone. If you want to try pressing star nine on your keypad on your phone.
Okay, well, it's not going to become functional, it appears. So please, I implore you to send an email into publiccomment@tcmail.org and Tracy can read your public comment. Is there, are there any other hands up or any other emails?
No.
Okay. So as much as I'd like to accommodate this person, if they're muted, we can't do much about it. So we'll close this section of the meeting and hope that perhaps they can send in an email. I hope they do. All right. So tonight, we have an item under new hearings. This is 201 Casa Buena Drive. This is the Tesla dealership. This is a public hearing for review of design review application PL 2021-001 for minor modifications to the existing commercial building, including new exterior paint colors and an associated sign permit for new signage to accommodate a proposed Tesla dealership at 201 Casa Buena Drive. So this would appear to be your item, Tracy.
It is, and there is a presentation. Thank you, Chair Chase and Commissioners. Happy to bring forward this application presentation to you tonight. The proposed project, hopefully you can see my slides.
Yes.
Good. The proposed project includes a modification to the north elevation, new exterior paint colors and associated signage, as he said, to accommodate a Tesla dealership. Having a little, be one second till it responds to me, I think. Apologies.
Okay.
There we go. Project site is approximately two and a half acres in size. To the west across Conal Street is the existing Land Rover Marin dealership. And to the south and southwest are apartment complexes. The property is owned C3 Highway Commercial. Automobile sales and service agencies are a permitted use in the C3 zone. The site has been used as a car dealership since its construction in the 1960s. The site is developed with an existing commercial building that's approximately 21,000 square feet in size. It consists of a showroom area and a service garage area attached. Vehicle inventory is primarily stored to the south of the existing building. Access to the parcel is through four driveways, a pair of driveways on Casa Buena Drive and a pair of driveways on Conal Street. As part of the project, the applicant will be installing on this site EV charging stations to the east and west property lines. 10 EV charging stations have already been installed consistent with state law and the town's EV streamlining ordinance. These photos show the existing building when it was temporarily occupied for storage for Volvo. The existing building has a stucco finish with white paint. And the showroom features large display windows while the service areas are windowless and have roll-up doors for vehicle access. The main entry to the showroom is to the north and includes an entry arch feature with an overall height of 24 feet 6 inches and is proposed to be removed and the storefront patched and cleaned to like new condition. Also shown is the existing west elevation along Conal Street. This is the existing east elevation facing the freeway and the second photo is the existing south elevation of the attached service garage. Exterior changes to the building include, as I said, demolition of the entry arch and new exterior paint colors. The applicant proposes to paint the showroom areas of the building in this light gray, bunny gray it's called. And this color here is wrought iron gray and is proposed to be applied to the service garage areas of the building. The other two colors shown here are colors for signage and we'll cover that momentarily. This is showing the proposed north and east elevations of the building where signage is proposed and the bunny gray on the showroom and the wrought iron gray on the service garage area, including the roll-up doors. Back up a little bit. With the demolition of the entry arch, overall building height, that's entry arch, the north elevation, this is after removal. The building height will be reduced to 19 feet 8 inches in height. And again, the limits of modifications to the south and the west elevations include the new exterior paint colors, the light gray and the dark gray. The previous Dodge Jeep Chrysler Ram dealership signage consisted of individual automobile logos on the east and the north elevations with a total sign area at the time of 128 square feet. Those previous signs were illuminated, two were white, one was green and one was red. And there was also an illuminated Marin sign over the entry arch and a non-illuminated service sign over the main service garage door. The applicant proposes to install two new illuminated signs on the north elevation and two on the east elevation. The signs consist of the Tesla logo, here's a larger cleaner version, and the Tesla wordmark. Here. The proposed sign area is 72.7 square feet on each elevation for a grand total of 145.4 square feet, where 150 square feet is permitted. The gray metal Tesla wordmark will be hit a lit in white and the Tesla logo will be internally illuminated and to give it a red and white appearance. All illuminated building signs will be on dimmers and timers. The applicant also proposes a non-illuminated service sign of the same size over, again, the main service entry on the north elevation. This side shows the signage on the east elevation. This proposed signage again is the same size and same sign as what is proposed on the north elevation. There's an existing two-sided freestanding master identification sign at the east property line. Shown here, it was approved on appeal by town council in 2004. The sign is internally illuminated with fluorescent tubes inside each panel and that existing lighting method is not proposed to change. The applicant proposes to replace the existing Dodge Ram Chrysler Jeep logos on the lower panel of the sign with the Tesla wordmark and Tesla logo shown here on the right. Total proposed sign area on the freestanding sign is 43.9 square feet, where 100 square feet is the maximum allowed for a master identification sign. An attachment three to the staff report shows this sign illuminated at night. Staff is able to make all design review findings as included in attachment two to the staff report resolution 21-001 and is recommending approval of this application. I'm happy to answer any questions and we have the project architects and the Tesla team also on the call for any questions that you may have. And lastly, public comment received prior to this meeting from Ms. Simon, Ms. Haas, Ms. Kaiser and Mr. McPherson were emailed to you this afternoon and as is our practice, was posted on the town's website of late correspondence for public meetings. And finally, and lastly, there is a recommended change to Public Works Condition of Approval Number 17. It was discovered there is no yellow curb for unloading on Casa Buena, only on Conal Street. And as such, the change to this condition would be that it reflects allowed vehicle unloading on, at the yellow curb on Conal Street only. That concludes my presentation. Again, available for questions if you have them. Thank you.
And just on that condition of approval, I think it says Conroy Street, but we'll change that as well to Conal.
Yes.
Thank you, Tracy. I'm going to check in with the Commissioners before we go to the presentation by any of the Tesla people. Commissioner Bendel, do you have any questions for Tracy?
Not necessarily for Tracy, but I hope that somebody is going to be addressing the concerns that were part of this public comment.
Okay. Don't have an opportunity for that. Commissioner Rizzo, do you have any questions?
Yes, I have a few questions. I believe I read somewhere in there that the ownership as part of this application or in conjunction, there's a property line in the center of the building. Is that part of the application to merge the, merge the two lots or is that just ongoing as a separate issue?
Thank you, Jim. That is the reason for the condition of approval for the building department. There are certain construction requirements. If you were to have a property line bisect the building and clearly they wouldn't be meeting those construction requirements. And so the only solution is to, at a minimum, merge or erase the lot line that's bisecting the building. And I believe that condition of approval is attachment. Attachment two. Condition 30, 33.
And it's not a, it's a staff level review. It's not a discretionary permit application process.
It's just odd that it was cut, cut in half to begin with. I'm just, I was just curious that there's a, there's a lot of lot lines over there on that one big parcel.
Yes.
And, and could you shed a little bit more light on the master plan program that was approved as a variance? The, the sign, the sign itself, I think it was, it looked like it was two separate variances. One for the height of the sign that might have happened a long time ago and then maybe when all the new dealerships came together and decided to do a master sign program, it might have been a second approval at town council level.
They, yes, it was approved by town council on appeal of the planning commission's approval, first of all. And there is a variance, two variances, a variance for height of the freestanding sign. The height of this sign is 25 feet, where 15 feet is the maximum for any freestanding sign. The second variance was, at the time, they considered the partner dealerships under the same ownership as one site. The dealership being the Land Rover, it was price dealership and the dealership at this site, also a price dealership, were considered one site. And there's a freestanding sign at 195 Casa Buena. You can only have one on a site. So those were the two, the two variances. And also the reason why you see the partner dealership's logos at 201 Casa Buena as a result of that approval.
I'm assuming the sign was, was, was recommended to be that high because you couldn't see over that. It's hard to see from the freeway, I would imagine.
Yes. Yes. And it was compared with other similarly other signs of similar height within Cordera Madera.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for giving me the background. Appreciate it.
Okay. Dr. Bundy, do you have any questions for Tracy?
Just the issue of the curb painting on Conal. Is that in relationship to the changes at Sanford, Meadowsweet and Sanford that made it more difficult for car carriers to unload and get back on the freeway?
My understanding is that that yellow curb has been there for quite some time and predates the realignment of the Sanford intersection. I would expect though, that with that realignment, that vehicles traveling on Conal is increased. That's the, since you can't exit on Sanford anymore, you need to exit either. You need to exit on Conal to get back out to Tampa Bay's drive. So I would expect that with additional cars on Conal, that it's created difficulties for all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Metcalf, do you have any questions for Tracy?
I have a question. I don't know if this is the time for Tracy to answer it, but in one of the letters that we received, the person who wrote it mentioned that when previous work was done, that a subcontractor, I guess it was an electrical subcontractor, didn't do the best job, I'll put it that way. And I just wondered what control we have, since this is private property being developed by a private firm, what control we have over the contractors and subcontractors?
You mean that Tesla utilizes for individuals who are, you know, purchasing their products for their home?
No, we, we are approving certain upgrades to this property. Contractors will be brought in. They, I'm sure there'll be some subcontractor work. And I am wondering, when we approve a project such as this, which is for a private owner, you know, rather than it being a building that is, you know, town-owned.
Yep.
If we have any control over the contractors who are chosen and the subcontractors, other than the fact they should be licensed, which I think is a given.
Yes, it is a given. And that's how the, the building department primarily would control active, valid and correct classification of license for individuals working on this site, at this site. And when they sign for their building permit, we check for workers' compensation, insurance and town business license. And they sign that they will only utilize licensed subcontractors for working at this site. There's no opportunity to obtain a building as, as an owner builder for a commercial property. So the control, I would say mostly lies within the building department and the building inspector to enforce California state licenser, contractor licensing law.
So there is no checking through, like the Marin Builders Exchange, to find out if their suits against the contractor claims or claims or anything like that. So you
We do check or the building department does check for any suspension of the license or restrictions on a contractor's license as part of the process. But it would have to get far enough that, a complaint would have to get far enough that it is, causes a suspension or flag with the contractor state license board. But they will be refused signing for the permit if, if the building department found any sort of suspension of, of their license with the, the state licensing board.
Okay. Well, sometimes the problems are in addition to whether or not a license, you know, is suspended. It would be very easy then for the building department to pick the phone, call the Marin Builders Exchange, which would have the information and say, do you have any records on this particular contractor or any complaints or where before it's, the project starts.
Yeah, we don't have any control of it. We're not, it's not within the, the building department's discretion to determine a private business's contractor as long as they're licensed. So just be clear about that.
Okay. Thank you. At this point then, I think we've asked the staff questions and I would like to move on to the presentation by the architect or whomever Tesla would like to put out front first.
I don't think they have a presentation, but I think if Tesla has any words they'd like to add or their vision for the site at all, please feel free.
So there are several Tesla people on the call, including the architect. And I'm wondering, have any of you read the comment letters that have come in? You are muted at the moment.
This is Scott Ruffey. I'm the Architect of Record for the site. I'm with Haskell. And I did read through the email, the comments that were provided.
All right. So is there a statement that you would like to make for the project or address any of those concerns? Or is there anything you'd like to say?
No, I mean, we, I think we certainly appreciate your time and consideration this evening and I'm glad to be here and be a part of the improvements on this building. I think that you'll find that it's making a very small amount of changes to the building and quite nice aesthetic improvements in fact. So I'm trying to keep the, the changes to a minimum. And I don't think we have too much in addition to say that didn't, the presentation that Tracy gave, I think summed up the majority of the design that we're putting forward.
Okay. All right. Being that there are other representations of this organization on the call, is there anything that they would like to add to that?
Hi, this is Lucy from Tesla. We definitely want to thank you guys for reviewing our application and hearing what we want to do for our sites. And we appreciate Tracy and her time. She's really summed up what we wanted, wanting to do for the site. So we, we are not doing, you know, any too much crazy improvements. It's pretty muted. And we feel like we're providing good aesthetic improvements to the site. So we appreciate your time and hope for approval.
Okay. Have, has Tesla or anybody there read the comment letters and have anything to address in the response?
Yeah. Hi, my name is Julie Ortiz. I lead up the Tesla Results Development Design Team. Just going through the specific comments that were addressed, I'll speak to the specific around the subcontractor. I, this is obviously not our intent to hire contractors that aren't doing the proper work. I, we take this very seriously when we, we see these kind of, kinds of things. We will definitely take this back to our construction team and make sure that, you know, we're, we're hiring. We are always looking for the best contractors to do our work. So, you know, if there was damage done or if there were specific things done, we want to definitely make sure that we're taking the right steps here. And so we will be going up to the, for the new scope of work with a new contractor. And we'll make sure that we, we do our best to make sure these things are addressed for any future construction. As it relates to transporting of vehicles, you know, we, we are definitely working with every city that we're in to make sure that we're, you know, doing our deliveries and, and, you know, offloading of vehicles during times that, that are amenable. I think we're willing to work with, with people on that. We have, we can send our logistics team specific times if we want to start, you know, talking about that. But I think we are, we want to work with the cities that we're in to make sure that we're not causing, you know, any issues. I know the site was a previous dealership. So I don't really imagine that it's going to be too different from what the previous tenant was doing. And then I think there was one more comment around the tax revenue. I'm not sure. It looks like the, the question is more about making sure that we're filing and paying the necessary tax payments. Like, you know, we have a separate team that, that makes sure that we do this as a part of our business license setup and, and make sure that we were following all the proper requirements here. So we're happy to address that specifically. But I don't, I don't know if I have any specific comments to this, other than we'll make sure that we, we are, you know, following the proper paperwork and payments that's necessary with the town. And yeah, just thank you for taking the time and we're happy to answer any other questions. Hopefully that kind of addressed those specific comments within the letter. If there's anything else, we're happy to address them.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anything else from anyone else on the Tesla team? Okay. I'm not hearing anything. I'm going to just go ahead and ask Tracy and Director Wolf a couple of questions here, since I think it's all on the lines of the Commissioners. Given the commentary about lighting that is on the site, that lighting has been in place for how long? Does anybody know? And what has changed, if anything, of recent time period?
You're talking about the parking lot lighting and building stair lighting versus I don't know the age of it. In looking at it, it looks significantly older than what's installed, maybe at the nine luxury cars across the street, which is supposed to be LED. These are not. They, they are, just seem to be directed down towards the parking lot, but they do look to be older, which some prefer and some, in terms of color and warmness, and some, some do not.
Right. Okay. So the condition of the lighting being what it is, is not a new condition. It has been there in place for some time.
Yep.
Is that what you're saying? Okay. How can this issue of transport creating the possibility of an unsafe condition along the highway be addressed? I, I will say that I don't know of an auto dealership that doesn't do it in this manner, whether it's Porsche or Lamborghini or whoever it is and any, there, there's no room to pull an auto transporter into an auto dealer partnership. So they all do it in the street. Is there any way that we can address this?
There is an existing lengthy yellow curb on Conal Street. It's on the west side of that street up against the Land Rover dealership. And it's sufficient length for a standard car carrier and has a limit of one hour for, for parking, for loading and unloading. And as part of the conditions of approval, Public Works has added that the condition I referenced earlier that requires use only of that yellow curb in coordination between the two dealerships for any unloading of vehicles. And that the travel way, the public way for vehicles of traveling is not to be used. and that the travel way, the public way for vehicles of traveling is not to be used under any circumstances. And that will involve probably a level of enforcement between coordination with code enforcement and myself and Public Works to make sure that that's adhered to. Since, so there is that aspect, but that's, that's how we've looked at addressing that concern from the community.
Yeah, and I would just say, you know, this is something that we'd be happy to work on and with just having greater communication with the automobile dealership in terms of when their deliveries are expected. And if that's what's needed to ensure that they're delivering cars at times in coordination with the Land Rover dealer so that there is room and that it's maybe a low traffic time period, we'd be happy to do that and coordinate with it, with the dealership if they would like to engage in that way. Otherwise, it will just be sort of, you know, we'll, we'll be monitoring and, and obviously if there's any concerns or complaints and somebody sees that somebody has stopped in the road, they should call, call code enforcement right away. That's one of the reasons why we have additional staffing and have started, you know, a code enforcement official position along with additional staff now that will be working actually through weekends, starting fairly soon, to address sort of these quality of life complaints. So I would just say that's, that's something that we're available and more, have more resources as a town now to deal with those sorts of concerns maybe than we did in the past.
That's great. That'll be a big help. And maybe that will address that commentary. One of the comments regarding tax revenue, I would dare say that times have changed in the town and that collection is probably, not only is it not our solving that issue, I would think.
Yeah, you know, we've, we've certainly, this is, it's, you know, I mean, it is a good point to raise in that things are sort of not always quite clear, but in terms of, you know, ensuring that the tax revenue is, is appropriately or properly accumulating to the, the places it's supposed to go to in terms of the town. But, but that, that is certainly a focus of our finance department. We, we work and have confirmed, for example, there is a Tesla showroom at the Village and that's had a significant amount of point of sales there. And so we're, we've have communications with, with Tesla on that and, and we would do so again here. I mean, this one's a little bit more obvious even than, than the showroom, which, because obviously this is a, this is a, a physical dealership with cars on the lot and so anything sold out of there would, would obviously be a point of sale at, in, in Quorum Dara. But, but it, you know, it's, it's, it's a focus and we'll make sure that that is, is handled appropriately.
Great. All right. Thank you, Adam. I'm going to ask the commissioners now for questions of staff or anyone else before we go to public comment. So with that said, Margaret, do you have any questions for staff after hearing more?
Yeah, the, the monument sign. I under, as I understand, that was, you said it was on appeal to the town council. Can you just give a short history of that? What was the problem with it?
The appeal was from a citizen who disagreed with the variance, is my understanding, and wanted to take it to the, the next level. It, it, it seems pretty, it was as if it was a fairly standard exercise of the appeal rights.
And so I'm just trying to get a handle on the public comment here. It seemed to be somebody was disturbed, this is what I'm just taking from it, disturbed by the lights. They were above the dealership looking down on that particular kind of lighting. And so is the lighting going to be changed? Or is it the same issue that?
There's no, this individual was under the, the assumption that the freestanding sign structure itself was changing and it's not. The lighting method on the freestanding sign is not proposed to change. It would be a change out of the panel face of it. So the internally lit, lit by fluorescent tubes inside of the panel remains the same on the freestanding sign.
Well, the person is going to have the same ongoing problem with it. Then the other question I had is, and I'm not sure about it, but I know that dealerships, when they do work on cars, there's a lot of, there's garbage produced or refuse. And I just am wondering, does Tesla, because it's this electronic sort of mechanism, are there batteries that are going to needing special disposal and where are those going to be disposed of? Be put out on curb and picked up by the garbage people or how's it going to work?
Yeah, if it's okay, I'll, I'll take that question. So, yeah, we, we definitely don't dispose of our batteries in that manner. I mean, we, we have, you know, programs in which we recycle things, but I think we won't have a ton of battery storage here. You know, a lot of it is just like, you know, the repair vehicles and taking them on and off. And so we're not having, you know, huge amounts of battery storage and, and, yeah, we, we don't dispose in, in the regular trash. I mean, we're obviously very conscious about these things in general. So that, like, you know, making sure we're environmentally aware of how we're disposing of things is, is a very important part of our mission.
Okay. The other thing that I have a question about, and I don't know if it really affects the design review, but reading the Nextdoor website, it seems like every other day batteries are being stolen out of cars. And, and so I'm wondering if there's any kind of special security you're going to have installed to discourage that kind of thing. It's become very common to steal batteries from cars, electronic batteries.
Yeah, I, I think we typically look at each site differently as to how we provide security. We do plan for cameras at the site. And so, you know, and we also obviously have the fencing that's already existing where the majority of our vehicles will be stored overnight. But, yeah, much of it will be via security cameras. And I think we'll, we'll continue to assess if there are further issues with our security teams.
That's it.
Okay, thank you, Margaret.
So I was just going to add that, you know, just as added measure, each vehicle really kind of has its own security measure. As you know, it's, it's, there are cameras all around all the vehicles. So that's, that's another measure of security.
Thank you. Commissioner Rizzo, do you have any questions for staff and so forth?
Yes, as, as far as I could tell, the only illuminated sign in the package that, that's not pre-existing is they're all facing away from the residential hill behind it on the southwest. Is, is that correct, Tracy? There's, there's nothing.
Correct. The, the signs are illuminated signs and, and actually including the service, a non-illuminated service sign is on the north elevation.
Yeah.
Two of the illuminated signs, the Tesla logo and wordmark are on the north elevation above the main entry and the other two are on the east elevation facing the freeway. So you're, you're correct.
Okay. And just to address the contractor issue, it looked like when I read it, it was a, it was a battery and, and charging at a residence that was installed and it wasn't necessarily what was the work that was being done on site. Could, could you confirm that? I mean, it sounded like someone wasn't happy with a subcontractor that they hired that may have been a preferred vendor on their website to their own house, not necessarily a Tesla employee.
That's what it sounds like.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're right.
Yeah.
You're right. I'm just reading this.
Okay, all right. And then the, the other question I had, the EV site, the EV, the required EV charging is, is, is that open to public that are other cars than Tesla? Or is that, that program, Adam, is that, or is that going to be the additional Tesla's charging stations?
I believe they're all Tesla. Julie, mind speaking to that? If those are open, open to customers and/or general public or just for the service staff?
Yeah, these are actually mainly to support the service staff. So they will be for internal use.
Okay. And then lastly, I, I was just wondering if Tesla had any future plans to put solar and, and, and power walls in to support some of the charging and energy uses that are, that are going to happen at the, at the new site? You guys have any programs in the works for that?
I'll let you answer that one too, Julie. We've spoken about that in a letter.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we, we definitely want to, you know, we lease most of our buildings and we are having conversations with landlords specifically around doing stuff like solar. And unfortunately, because we're leasing, it, it really is more of a conversation with landlords to touch the roof. I will say, not specific to the site, but I mean, we definitely are looking at future developments and seeing how we can utilize some of our energy products to support the, the energy consumption, obviously given, given the products that we have. So not, so to answer your question correctly, like not, not specifically for the site, meaning because of the fact that we're leasing, but it is something that is in the works and we're continuing to evaluate.
Okay. All right. Because I had a last one, but I think I could, I could probably bring it up in, in, in closing. Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Rizzo. Dr. Bundy?
Yes, the question I had was, will the dealership at the Village continue? And is the new location primarily a service center? Or is it also new car sales out of, out of the new address?
Fine, thank you, Julie.
Yeah, well, we, we currently still have a lease at the existing location at the Village, so we will continue to operate there for a lease. The new location will be a full Tesla center, meaning that it will have a showroom aspect as well as service and delivery.
Okay, thank you. And the, the other question, just in relationship to the freestanding sign, as we go forward, what is the importance of a freestanding sign for a recognized center such as Marin Luxury Cars and Tesla? Because everybody has GPS, everybody knows where they're going. What is the benefit of this sign to Tesla and Marin Luxury Cars in 2021?
Well, you have a traveling public and an opportunity to communicate with them using signage on a building. GPS isn't perfect, I would say, but it is a good opportunity for visual recognition and repetition of any logo or wordmark and, and a standard marketing practice. Initially freestanding signs and then with the original approval, much more important to advertise, obviously, to the traveling public as that was one of the only ways they could be made aware of you. But as everyone knows here, multiple channels are utilized and I think continue, will continue to be utilized. And I'll, I'll let Julie elaborate on that, but that's my sense, if that's helpful to know.
Okay.
Julie, do you have any?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, with any signage, yeah, I was just going to say with any signage, it's, it's about, you know, because of the great visibility on the highway, it's about people knowing that we're there. Obviously, there's, there's brand recognition and then location recognition. So I, I think it's important for people to know and have confidence in, you know, our product and locations by knowing that we have centers to support their needs.
Okay.
Just to add to that, Bob, there's, was a late request from Tesla to install a, a flagpole and flag on the east property line, a Tesla flag. And our sign ordinance would allow for a banner, a flag with design review approval. And given, given the lateness of the request post-public notice, it would need to be noticed. And so it's not before the commission tonight to decide. But potentially, if, if this permit is approved, it could be a amendment to that design review permit at a later date if, if they decide to apply for that, that flagpole and flag. Marin, I mentioned in the staff report that many of Marin does have a flagpole installed on which they fly a United States flag. And the Land Rover dealership does have a flagpole installed on which it does not appear, either due to the season or due to choice that they do not fly a flag at all on it. But I'll, I'll be keeping my eye on it as the weather turns.
Okay.
Thank you, Bob. Commissioner Metcalf, do you have any questions for staff or the Tesla panel?
Yes, I do. My concern has to do with the internal showroom lighting at night. Tracy did mention many, a minute ago, and that was one of the dealerships we had a problem with several years ago of the internal lighting overnight from the showroom. And we finally, we had them put some kind of a scrim, like is used in the theater that could come halfway down to keep it from glaring out. So I'm wondering exactly how Tesla plans on internally lighting their showroom.
Yeah, so the lights will, oh, sorry. Okay. Yeah, so, so normally with all of our sensors, you know, the lights will be obviously be on during operational hours, but at, at full capacity, but during non-operational hours, we typically turn off the main lights and only have the emergency lights on so that we can, it is, you know, for that very purpose so that we're not like glaring. But we also, you know, again, it's, it's, it's for visibility. I think it's important just to, for people to be able to see what's inside, but not at, you know, 100% capacity. So we'll have limited lights that will be on and it's all on timers. So that will be controlled through our, our lighting controls.
And the lights will be facing inward and not outward?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. That's it, Peter.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I think that I just wanted to say to Margaret's concern about batteries, it's illegal to leave batteries out for pickup. And for instance, I take all my batteries to a recycling center. So that's just the way it works. They can't do that. And the batteries out of a Tesla, I think, are a little more difficult to steal than they are out of a, a regular car. But is this the first showroom that Tesla is doing like this or are there others?
Yeah, there, there are many others.
Okay. All right. Good to know. All right. I think it's time we open this up to public comment. So we're going to open this up for public comment. At this time, you will have three minutes to make a comment. I will time the individuals who have a comment. So you can send in a public comment to So you can send in a public comment to publiccomment@tcnmail.org or put your hand up on Zoom. So with that said, do we have either of those, Tracy?
Well, I'll give our attendees a moment to decide if they want to speak. Martha checking, checking emails for me. Doesn't look like we have any, any emails. Our attendees, if you'd like, you could find a raise hands button at the bottom of your computer screen or in the middle of your screen on your phone. Let's see, Glenda Corning with a raised hand.
Okay, please.
Thank you, Peter. I'm gonna ask you to unmute, you can go ahead when you're ready.
Hi, this is Glenda Corning, and I'm sorry that I have not been able to attend the earlier part of the meeting. But I do just want to, I am all in favor of the changes that I've seen on the website about for the Tesla dealership. I am concerned that there'd be light, less light toward the community. I don't think this is an issue, but I just wanted to express my interest in, you know, having light that from any lighted sign that reflects into the neighborhood be, you know, as diminished as possible. And perhaps to ask if the lighting of the grounds could be dimmed at a certain hour of the night. I look through that from my home, it's extremely bright all night long. And I, I don't really think it needs to be like, you know, midday throughout the night. And I just wondered if that, you know, if you guys might discuss that or suggest that that happened, that they dim it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Glenda. Anyone else with a hand up?
I don't see any additional hands up.
And no email commentary so far?
Nope. It does not look like there's any email commentary.
Okay. Well, with that, I will say that we close it to public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion. So who would like to go first? Margaret?
I just want to say, Peter, I wasn't talking about regular batteries. I was talking about electric car batteries.
Oh, I know, I know.
Okay. And there have been a lot of thefts of those. But I don't have any, you know, problem with approving this because it pretty much maintains the status quo. I would have liked a little more. I didn't think the answers from Tesla were as thorough as I would have liked them to be. But I don't see any problem with approving the plan.
Okay. Well, thank you. Commissioner Rizzo?
Yeah, I think, you know, I'm always happy to see that there's additional car charging for the public and the community going in, even though it's dedicated to Tesla. I think that there's enough Tesla owners in our community that can benefit from some additional charging around the community. I also don't have a lot of issues with any of the demolishing of the, of the entry. It looks a little dated. I think it'll clean up the facade a little bit. And, you know, with, it doesn't, it's not going to have the mirage of, of branding. It's going to be, you know, branded for one brand, which is nice. And there's actually less square footage moving in and all the lights from the signage that are later are away from the community, which, which is also attractive. I believe the color scheme itself is gonna, it's gonna kind of bring down the mass of the building, which is also, I think, a nice attribute to the design, even though they're not doing a lot of physical work. Some of these moves can, can really help bringing down the scale of a building that's directly in a public eye, especially with all the residences on the hill. As far as the monument sign, or, you know, our city council spoke and approved a variance and I, and and it's a grandfathered in condition. So, and I agree, you have to be able to see it from, from the, from the freeway. And that's probably why, the reason why it was so tall. I would have liked to seen the Tesla sign on the top just because of the adjacency to the structure. But there may be some, some things in leasing that Tesla needs to work out to get that to happen. And then, you know, as Tracy said, she did a fabulous job once again with her presentation. And, you know, the proposal meets all the, you know, substantially conforms to the general plan and the zoning ordinance. So, you know, there's nothing negative to be said about that. And, and I also don't have any problem with, with them merging the lots. I think that's a good idea. We need some larger lots in Corder Madera for future development. So, you know, I can make all the findings for, for this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Very thoughtful comments. Dr. Bundy?
Just following up on Jim's earlier comments, given that there's going to be a huge carbon footprint from the standpoint of the charging that's going to go on for all of the vehicles that are there. Working out some arrangements with the leaseholder to be able to put solar panels on the roof, I think would be a great thing. I understand that it is difficult when you don't own the building and that it's owned by someone else. But this would be a great opportunity to reduce the carbon footprint associated with that. And also following up on Glenda Corning's comment that if the, the lighting in the parking lot could be turned down, dimmed or converted to LEDs as also help with the carbon footprint, I think that would be great going forward. The other issues that were discussed and the plans, I think, are all very appropriate for the use of the building. And I can also make the findings.
Thank you, Bob. Appreciate that. Commissioner Metcalfe?
I can make the findings. I think the aesthetic improvements on the building are very good and will make a big difference. I do like the fact that it's not going to be that bright white anymore. As far as the lighting goes, I think it's important that there is some checking up and enforcement being done on the lighting on both sides of the freeway, the auto dealerships. I'm on the east side of Corder Madera. When I, when we were allowed out, when I would drive home from these night meetings, you're blinded when you go around the curve because of the lighting in, in the parking lots of the auto dealership, you know, where the cars are parked overnight. I guess they think it's easier to do that than put up trains and cameras. But I think it's important that we have enforcement that's checked on both sides of the freeway. And it's an opportunity to start doing it with new signs being put up, et cetera.
Thank you, Phyllis. I agree with you. Enforcement of these lighting issues, it can be ramped up and that it's Adam's department's responsibility to have that code enforcement out there. And we have to make comment to Adam and tell him when we believe it's offensive that he has to go check on it. I believe that's the way it'll work. Adam, you can tell me no or not. So it's, it's great that this is going in. It's going to improve a building that is there. And it's a product that I believe is timely and current. So having this in there is a good thing. And I can make all the findings for it. The, to everyone's point about the solar option, that you would think that Tesla could say they would put panels on the building with it. Sell the solar panels, because Tesla's now in the solar panel business, I believe. But that might be cross pollinating, I don't know. So all that said, do we have a motion from anybody for approval of this resolution?
In the matter of design review and sign permit application for 201 Casa Buena Drive, Tesla PL-2021-0001 and 0002, a move to approve.
For a second.
I'll second that and once again note that there was a change in the wording under, what was it, number 17? Did you say, Tracy?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Metcalfe, for remembering that, that's great.
I'll go to check.
Okay, I'm gonna take the role.
Seventeen.
We'll start with Commissioner Rizzo.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Mendel?
Yes.
Commissioner Bundy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Metcalfe?
Yes.
And Chairman Chase?
Yes.
Okay, Tracy, can you read the appeal rights?
And any decision of the planning commission may be appealed to the town council within 10 calendar days. Appeal forms are available at town hall and also on our website. And there is a filing fee of $300.
Congratulations to Tesla. Please go forth and make it happen. All right.
Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
On our agenda tonight, we have no more business items, so we go right into reports and so forth from commissioners. So, let's see, I was responsible for January 19th. But that is not the earlier meeting, is that correct, Adam? Was there one, a town council meeting prior?
Right, we've had a couple of town council meetings since our last planning commission meeting.
So for two weeks prior to January 19th, that would have been the, or the week prior to that, who was responsible for that meeting? Nobody.
That would have been the 5th of January.
But I think we, no, so there was no council meeting on the 6th of January.
Would have been the 12th.
It would have been, right, no, the 12th was our planning commission meeting where
That's right, yeah.
We had the study session for the Corder Madera Residence Inn. And then on the 19th was the first town, town council meeting. And then February 2nd was another town council meeting. And, you know, so there's been two town council meetings since
Okay.
Since our last planning commission meeting, so.
So I'm responsible for January 19th.
Was there another? I didn't, mine ends at, the communication I have ends at December 15th on my schedule. And I don't know, it is somewhere where maybe perhaps I missed an email, but I didn't see anything in my junk.
Looking for the attendance schedule for 2021, I will send it to you again, no problem.
Thank you very much. Would, would I be the one that was supposed to be at a meeting that I missed?
Yes, on the, the one on February the 2nd.
There you go.
We can.
Yeah, we all, the rest of us watched that one.
Tracy, could you schedule two?
I will.
I apologize.
No worries. So on the, the meeting on the 19th, the business items that the council went through had to do with the auto report for the fiscal year and the adoption of a budget, all of which really came out looking as rosy as possible for the next, for what we've been through and where we're going. Todd was quite upbeat about the town's financial condition. And that was a very direct lead in to the preliminary discussions and possible direction for the town manager on how to best proceed with town hall facility and operations discussion. So that's where essentially Todd was proposing different lease options for the council to consider as well as the plan that we approved for the town hall as a possibility. So Todd spent a fair amount of time laying out the financial condition of the town and the potential options and asked the town council to provide direction on what direct, how to proceed with presenting options for the council to make a decision. It was in this meeting that he portrayed the existing town hall condition as very poor. And really relayed how badly in need of a new facility the town is and laid out a number of options and a number of things came to light, including the fact that at some point the post office property may be abandoned by the post office. And that was news to everybody. But since that meeting and I think the February 2nd meeting of the council was quite decided in how this was resolved. So I know Adam could report on it, but who was to report on February 2nd?
Peter, that was the one I missed.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't have that calendar.
That's all right.
Peter, I saw part of it.
I saw the whole thing, so.
Okay.
It was all quite interesting. And I'll let Adam really make a sort of final statement with it about it. But the upshot was that the council essentially voted to proceed with getting underway with the new town hall project, if I'm not mistaken, that was the direction. And it was preceded by a rather, if I dare say impassioned case made by Todd Cruzamano about the, the need and the ability and the direction that he felt the town needed to go in to get into a new facility. And that the town could afford to go forth with a new facility despite the ramifications of COVID and the financial limitations that have beset virtually everyone in town. But as I said in the previous week, he really laid out the case of how their financial management over the last couple of years has really prepared the town for what we're undergoing now. And that he feels quite strongly that proceeding with the town hall project is the right thing to do at this time. So take it away, Adam.
Thanks, Peter. No, I, you, you hit on the main points there. I mean, obviously, we presented what we presented to the commission, essentially from the standpoint of, of the plans. And then Public Works Department did present some comparison analysis and of some of the other sites that potentially could be leased. And at the end of the day, I think, while, as Peter said, the council both the resolution to approve the mitigated negative declaration, the SECA document and, and to move forward and approve the town project report. And so hopefully you all got a chance to see the story polls up, which I think actually were really, you know, it, it, it sort of shows exactly what we were talking about from a fitting in, in a sense, to the surrounding context. It's really quite, the polls sort of showed, you know, the, the context and, and the way that it sort of nestles into the site, wraps around, wrapping around the existing redwood trees and whatnot. So anyways, that, that is, was obviously an exciting, exciting, exciting to hear that we were going to be moving forward with that. A lot of positive comments and some additional things to consider. A lot of positive comments and some additional things to consider, like potentially, you know, just looking into this nagging question of, not in a bad way of, but of whether we really are going to remodel or sort of scrape and build back that existing town hall structure. That's that's sort of a side, a sidebar of a piece of research we're going to be doing. But in any case, that was, that was sort of the main piece of that meeting.
Adam, can I ask a question before you move on? Now with, now in light of the post office potentially moving and maybe the fire department kind of merging in some fashion in a few years, is there any thought to a different master plan? I mean, you know, the mass of the building, you guys have the program down. Would you move it to a different area around there? Or you think that that's still the the staff still thinking that that's the location where you want the building to be in light of everything going on? I'm just curious if you guys have had some talks about it.
Yeah, I mean, we have, but I, you know, I think without getting into a discussion, it's really, which we can't do, obviously during this report. There's just a lot of moving pieces and different timelines and obviously we don't own the, that site, the post office site. That's a privately owned piece of property. So I, but I think, you know, Todd explained and we feel very comfortable that this is the right decision at this time to move forward in this way. So and what else? That's, that's really all I have on the second. Peter, I don't know if you wanted to, if there were other items that you wanted to discuss for that council meeting or report on?
On the second, I think that the other significant issue that came up was the LED lighting issue for the entire town. And we had a number of discussions at the commission about this years past. And at the council, there were a number of discussions in years past about this. So what it's evolved down to and was approved by the council is a program by one company to essentially replace all of the lights in the town with LEDs. And they've come down to a, an affordable replacement cost. Number one, number two is that they're all going to be 3,000 Kelvin, which is reasonably warm. And they are able to customize the installations to the degree that it might be focused away from homes more so than the existing lights, which just put out a ray of light all directions. So this is a big change and one that I look forward to. I don't know what the timeframe is. It just occurred to me that I don't know if this is a one-year, two-year, three-year program for this. Do you know, Adam, if there is such a timeframe?
No, I just, I know the design is the next phase. So that's where they're going to go around and sort of design the what you were talking about, the focus and the angle of the lights so that they are basically light post by light post sort of angled away from residents. There were some comments about concerns about the lights shining into people's homes and their, the response from the the lighting design firm that was hired was that they can actually adjust the angles and put in certain ways to direct the light in a much more significant way than they can do today with the current lights. So it's much more directed. And in full cutoff, you know, night sky compliant light fixtures. So again, focused down and away from lights. I don't know beyond how long, I think the lighting design phase will take of some months, but I believe, I would expect that it's intended to start. You'll start seeing this by the summer or by fall, the change is happening. I don't know if they're going to make it through the entire construction or replacement as it is this year, but I can find out and report back to the, to the commission.
So there are two locations at which there are test bulbs up or test light heads up. One is directly across, I believe, from the fire station and then there's one across from the nugget, I believe. Those are the two locations where if anyone is curious, you could see the color and type of lighting that these produce. So it'll be a hugely pleasant change, frankly, I think, to have these placed.
And, yes, and it's also a cost savings over time as well, to which is not, you know, of a not insignificant amount.
Of course.
Ah, yes, I wondered, Adam, are there going to be any light poles added or eliminated as far as their study goes?
No, I don't, I don't know. You know, if, yeah, I really, I don't believe so. But I would have to have Public Works or RJ sort of get back to me and I'm happy to follow up with that response.
Okay, I would think with them being refocused, there may be an opportunity to possibly eliminate some poles or even have places where the ballards instead of tall poles.
They're mounted on telephone poles for the most part. So I don't know. Yeah, that wasn't clear. So that's all I have to report on. Adam, anything for you?
Well, the town hall and remodel and addition project, I don't know, Phyllis, did you want to report on the, we did have an objective design and development standards meeting. And I'm happy to report on it unless, Phyllis, you would.
Well, I mean, I think we're making good progress. If you want to go and give the details since you're you work far more intimately than the commission does, the committee, whatever we're called.
Yeah, so we have this technical advisory working group, our next, we're actually, our next planning commission meeting, we'll be talking with you all and briefing you on sort of the direction of that project. So you're you'll be more aware of it. But in any case, we did have a meeting with our working group and anybody from the public or I've mentioned it before, this is all on our website. It's sort of, there's of so many different things going on now. It's, there's a lot of important projects in the town that we're working on, but we have several members of our community. Phyllis, Eli, the mayor, a couple of architects, actually, yeah, Rich Pearlstein, an urban planner. Our old former planning commissioner, Dan McAden, and others who are in the sort of work intimately with multifamily housing. And so in any case, we discussed sort of an approach for implementing the, what we're calling a toolkit. But implementing actually a set of what it is, is design regulations and standards for multifamily housing. And so we'll present that to you at the next meeting, but we wanted to check in with the committee or the working group prior to bringing that to the commission. So but we have, I think, a good, we got good direction and Martha really has been taking the lead in working on that project. And so you'll hear from us at the next meeting about relatively quick action we'll, we'll need to take on that and bringing, you know, those, those regulations in front of the the commission and then ultimately the council.
One thing, Adam, that you didn't mention, on the 24th, I think it is of March, we're going to have another meeting where we're going to look at these rules and regulations in the toolkit and work with them to meet what we have in Corder Madera to make it more of how our town is operating and, you know, I think that's important since we're dealing with all these rules and regs coming down from the state and you know how difficult they can be.
Yeah. So we'll get into that at the next meeting. Other than that, you know, obviously last week, in addition to the planning, sorry, the town council meeting where we talked about the town hall remodel and addition project, there was also the a couple of climate adaptation plan meetings and a lot of, we have a significant amount of public comment and engagement, which is great in a lot of ways that we are now have the, a lot of input and attention on that really important piece of work. So there's going to be some addition revisions, some significant revisions and I don't really want to get into a discussion here. Obviously, we didn't put anything on the agenda tonight to talk about it, but we will, as I've said before, I will like, I would like to bring the draft back as well for the commission so that they can see it as, and sort of you know, just be a little bit more aware of the, of what's in it and what the intent is. But if I will share with you actually what I'll do, Todd, town manager Todd Cusimano sent out a fairly lengthy email yesterday that I think explains sort of the direction that we're going to move forward with on that project. And so I'm sure a couple of you or many of you have it, but just I'll cover my bases and send it, send it to all of you. So you all have that. I don't have anything else to report.
Okay.
If I may add on to what you were talking about with the climate change and looking at the flooding and the fire dangers. In case you aren't aware, the state insurance commissioner has been very concerned about the number of policies that are being canceled upon renewal throughout the state, thousands upon thousands because of the fires we've had. So he is working with people at the state level to find ways and pass legislation for hardening the homes to protect them, kind of like several years ago, they changed the rules on what kind of roof you can have. So you may want to check with the people you work with and be sure you're kept apprised of what's going on and seeing what rules and regs we may want to do here in Corder Madera to help.
Well, it goes without saying that the yeah, fire insurance is a problem. With that said, any other reports from any other commissioners? No.
Peter, let me just, let me just add to what Adam was saying that after two years of study on the climate adaptive plan by a very talented group of consultants with a lot of input, I think from Adam as well as Todd and Sir Jay, a lot of public workshops and input. It turns out that there were a number of people that just weren't aware of this and objected to some of the language in document that Todd was able to change and all concerned about some of the potential solutions to this. And there was a significant pushback from people that felt they were going to be affected by this. And they're, the people that had already been on board and already been involved in this and knew what was happening were not silenced, but just weren't really involved in these final rounds of things. So this, the document is quite thorough. It's quite informative. It's quite well done. But is being changed just to really satisfy some of the individuals that were very concerned about the language or some of the proposals. And all of these were potential solutions going forward, a good ways into the future. So it's going to be revisited and Adam, as he said, will bring it back to us. But if you have a chance to read the document, I would recommend you do that.
Great. Thank you, Bob. Yeah, it's a huge issue. So with that said, and that we've reached the point where we have to approve meeting minutes, we have two sets of meeting minutes. We have December 8th and January 12th. Do we have a move to approve either or both of those?
I'll move to approve both of them.
I'll second.
Great.
Are you all in favor?
I. Okay. Thank you. With that said, I think we can close out this meeting and I'll wait breathlessly for my free ride in a Tesla. Nobody's, nobody's watching but us chickens, so that's okay. All right. Good night.